Okay, are we all ready? I will open the meeting. This is Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is ten o'clock in the morning. And it is the board, the select board meeting. Every other Tuesday meeting. And we begin with public comment. We have two folks with us in the audience. Phil?
Two things. One, you already mentioned the report from the, from Bar Harbor. Their information was essentially they beat the market and bonds crashed. Second thing is I solved the problem this week. There's been complaints from various people to me about the police cars being left idling all the time. And wear and tear on the engines and did we mean we have to replace everything? Did a little research, found out that there idle management systems. Called up the chief and said, hey, what do you know about idle management system? He said, we have one on the Explorer. It basically shuts the engine down, runs everything on battery. When the battery gets to some preset level that you set, starts the engine again, recharges the battery, does the same thing. Dramatically reduces the amount of idling. So called up the, the chief, I said, you know something, anything about these? He called the supplier, said, yeah, there's one we can add to the new truck for ninety bucks.
Alright.
Called Charge Guard. So he is, he is doing that. And that should take care of the, wearing out police cars, engines, idling, wasting taxpayers' money problem.
Excellent. Also, I would say that people need to realize that because of the emergency use of those, they don't turn them off when they are using them. So they can get in and go.
Yeah, that's the idea of this. It'll let you get down to like, those systems draw up apparently about two volts. And you're running a twelve to fourteen volt battery. So you can run it down to like five volts over some period of time. Kick the engine on, boost it back up, turn the engine off.
Great, thank you. Good research. You have a new position.
Gear, gear head.
Gear head, okay. And Rich?
I'm here to listen.
Okay.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No ma'am.
Okay then, we will move right along. We have some, Brendan from Granite Hill Municipal Services will be here around ten fifteen.
Yes.
So before then, let's take up our minutes from August seventh, the public meeting minutes. What do we wish to do with those?
Oh, second.
Okay, and I did note.
Maybe you got that one we'll change yesterday.
Yeah.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Give it aye.
And Judy, aye, they are approved. Okay, here we go.
Now you just had somebody jump on.
Okay.
Michelle Boydston?
Boydston, yes.
Yes, hi, sorry, just needed to unmute myself. I joined just for a quick question on behalf of the utility club for decorating the common during the fall.
Okay.
We did that last year and got very favorable feedback from people in the town. And we've set aside money in our budget to do it again. If it was okay with you guys, we would do the same thing. We would start, you know, put them up sometime in September, the same kind of display, and have it down November first.
So September to November. Dana, do they need a, a formal permanent application? Or I think last year we just said okay.
I don't think so. I think it's just a yes or a no from you guys.
I'm in.
That's fine with you? Ben, how do you feel?
I'm in.
Okay, that's fine with me. Michelle, you're all set to go.
Okay, well, thank you guys so much. We're looking forward to doing it again. And if it's okay, I'm, I'm gonna hop off. We just got back from vacation and we've got no food in the house.
You better go make that, okay.
Happy shopping.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck, bye bye.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Well, that's loud enough this morning.
Yeah. We have a manifest to approve. And it's five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and twenty-three cents, of which five hundred thousand is the school. Okay, Ben has moved it.
One second.
Uh, we get a little punchy in here sometimes. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Give it aye.
And aye.
And Judy, aye. And that is the manifest. Okay. And? Let's see.
Have an intent to cut, okay?
We do have an intent to cut.
Hey, antique looks fine and awful, but.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
One second.
Okay, thank you, Dave. All those in favor of the intent to cut, say aye.
And aye.
Give it aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay. That's approved. Here we go, here we go. This is, this was approved. Okay. Ben? Someone else is coming.
Or someone, yeah. Oh, it's not him, okay.
Okay. Let's see. Duty to use, this is gonna... We have a duty to use reasonable care and to inform the town. It's an additional provision that we're proposing go into the academy building request form. We had a little incident where people experienced perhaps a plumbing leak and it was not reported to anyone until it was very major and.
Put a bucket under it and.
Walked away.
And walked away and overflowed and caused a bunch of damage. Never bothered to tell anybody that it was water leaking.
And we should probably put it, attach it to anything.
Yeah, we can use this for other things, other times.
Well, if somebody comes out and uses something at the pond or the common and they see something dangerous, they should.
Take care of it, let somebody know.
Have duty to report it to us, that's right.
So this, this, it's really just a paragraph. It, it says, you know, use commercially reasonable efforts to, you know, take care of the property that you're using, the town property while you're using it. And if you notice a problem, you will promptly report it to the town. In any event, within three hours. And it gives contact information for how to, how to do that. And, and then it says if you don't do that and there's damage, you're on the hook for whether or not the damage is covered by insurance.
And, and it has contact phone and email? Yes, great.
There he is.
Hey, hello.
Process of getting the equalization rate case.
Let's give us one minute and then, so I've prepared to, do we need to take this to a, a public hearing? I don't think so.
No, and it's being reviewed and approved by the town council.
I will move it.
This is the second time you've talked about this.
Yep. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor, say aye.
And aye.
And aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much for the work on that. Okay.
Could, could we get a copy of the language? No time did his fingers leave his hands.
And as soon as we get two seconds in the office, it will be attached to the paperwork on the web.
Cool. I can give it back if you want.
I wrote it.
We have just been joined by Brendan McGon, McGon?
McGann.
McGann. And Granite Hill Municipal Services. He's going to explain how the abatements are done and the equalization ratio factors and how that all works. So you have the floor, sir.
So I guess the first thing to keep in mind is that every abatement really is different. So it's not like a blanket. Here's the abatement. It's either approved or not. Right? Everyone is applying for a different reason. And so therefore, you know, you're looking at different factors when, when either approving or denying an abatement. Where the equalization would come into effect essentially is if you have a property, someone is saying it's over assessed. We would then look at their comps. What are their comps? The comps would be something similar that has sold within a recent timeframe, right? So then, what we would wanna do is bring that, the current value or the assessed value up to the current market value. And by doing so, we would then equalize it. So what's the equalization rate? The equalization rate in town is sixty-seven point nine. So if you were looking at something right this year, we're over assessed. Here's our comps of things that sold within the last year. We would equalize their current assessed value, compare it to the, the comps of comparable properties. Where does it, where does it sit? So that's how that would come into effect.
Phil, you have a question, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I wanna be careful 'cause I, I don't really get to talk for my neighbors.
Okay.
But, but the property at one fifty-five River Road that is assessed at like two point seven five or two point six five or something. And I'm just not sure that the EQ, that it's being taxed at the, the sixty-seven percent as opposed to the full market value. I'm not sure the equalization ratio has been applied to the taxes on that property.
You wouldn't. We, the current assessed value stays in place for five years. So we're not adjusting it based on the equalization rate each year. Right? So next year, when the revow happens, that's when we would, we would look at the equalization rate and adjust the values to current market values. But we don't adjust it each year.
So they're not adjusted each tax period?
No, nope. Revaluations of properties happen every five years. Unless, right, some of the numbers get a little wonky. When I mean numbers, I mean the coefficient of dispersion is one of the numbers we looked at. I think we talked about that the last time I was here.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I wanna, I wanna, it makes me uncomfortable to be discussing a specific property, particularly with the owner not here. So I wanna make clear that this conversation is a general conversation.
Yeah.
How the system works and, and individual property owners would have to come and.
Understood.
I don't even know the property offhand, so, yeah, so my response had nothing. So, you know, twenty twenty, twenty-one was the revaluation. The values were set using the market data in twenty twenty-one, okay? It, those values stay in place for five years.
Until the next reassess.
Or until the next reevaluation, which in this case is twenty twenty-six. And that is the case. And so we aren't looking at changing those values at all from year to year.
But what's, what's the insignificance of that number then? Would you use it at any time with anything?
Yeah, so you would use it in an abatement. Yeah, so you would use it in an abatement, like I said, with comps. If someone files and says, we believe we're over assessed. Here's where properties are selling now. We would look at it. We factor the equalization rate with the property, the subject property. Where does it fall in compared to the comparables, to the comps of that property? Is it over? Then yes, maybe we need to look at something. If it's under, well, then we're under assessed. I'm sure they don't want us to then change it, right? We're not gonna raise it. But that's how we would factor that.
So this is when.
Land use change tax is another thing.
So this is when this would be looked at in between reassessments would be when an abatement is requested.
That would be one of the uses, yes. Also, like in a land use change tax, if someone has current use, it comes out of current use. We then apply the equalization ratio to it to find the market value.
So one of the things that's happened that I've noticed is that people request abatements but then refuse to allow anyone on the property to look at the property. So what happens there?
So, you know, it's typically automatically denied. We don't know at that point whether we're looking at something that there's any changes, right? Each abatement, year after year, is a new abatement. There's new circumstances. And so therefore, in order to know that you're looking at apples to apples, you need to have a fresh re, relook at everything. And so there is case law that says that that needs to happen, so.
Rich?
Yeah. Good morning, I'm Rich Brown. I happen to know about that property. I wanna ask a, a couple other questions first. So I heard you say that you do a revaluation, property values, the, the appraisal and assessed value stay the same until the next revaluation. And you pay tax on the appraised value?
The assessed value.
Thank you, yes, the assessed value until the next revaluation. In the case of a, an abatement request.
Yep.
There is a search for comps. And then from those comps, you then say, okay, I'm gonna pick a million dollars 'cause it's easy to, easy for, to do the calculation. So you look around and all comparable properties are a million dollars. You then apply the equalization ratio to say the proper assessed value of this property is six, last year, six forty, this year, six seventy, sixty, uh, six seventy-nine? The six, sixty-seven point nine?
Was the equalization offhand, I'm not.
Yeah, right. So, but you, you apply the equalization, so you go from a million and the new assessed value is, is that, is that lower value, the, the sixty-seven percent, whatever it is. Am I, am I saying that right? So you, you, let me, let me, let me say the example again. So abatement request comes in, you do the comps and you say similar houses are a million dollars. The, uh, the assessed value for this new property is, the, the incorporates the equalization rate, so it's six seventy, six something.
I think I know what you're getting at. So we have an assessed value. It's on the tax card, right? Someone files the abatement.
Yes.
Okay. Comps come in.
Yes.
Okay. We'll say the subject property is at five hundred thousand.
Right, yes.
When we apply the equalization rate, it's gonna come up with a higher value.
Because it's, it might be six hundred.
Because it's, at that point, in this case, it's sixty-seven point nine. It's under assessed. If it was anything over a hundred, that means it, it's, um, sorry, it's, at that point, it's under assessed if it's sixty-seven point nine. Anything over a hundred, it means it's over assessed, right? And so therefore, it would sort of be reduced. But in this case, the five hundred, let's say goes to seven hundred and fifty.
Right.
Okay? And subject properties are coming in at a hundred, at a, at a million. Well, that property with the new equalization rate is still under assessed. If now it gets to that seven fifty and we're finding that properties of comparables are selling for five hundred thousand, right?
Right.
Then that means that that property is now over assessed.
So my, so I guess my question is, the comps all come around and the, the comparable houses are selling for about a million.
Yep.
What is the assessed value of this house that asks for an abatement?
What's, I don't, I don't know. What's?
You don't apply the equalization?
What is, what's the assessed value of the house to start? So if you're saying the comps are a million, what's the assessed value of the, the subject property?
Well, I thought that was the purpose of the abate. I'm, I'm not, I'm not intentionally being dense here.
No, 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 but what I'm asking you is, is that the subject property has an assessed value.
Yes, on the tax cards, envisioned or.
And so what I'm saying to you is, what is that, what is that assessed value? If it's, if it's the five hundred thousand, like I'm saying, and when we equalize it, that new value is seven hundred and fifty, right? That means it's under assessed.
I would agree with that.
Compared to the comps. And then we would probably deny it to say, oh, we feel based on the comps that you are under assessed.
Right.
We are, we have you assessed fair enough. If, like I said, the comps now are not a million dollars, right? They're at seven hundred and fifty or a five hundred thousand.
Right.
And the, now we've equalized your five hundred thousand dollar property to that seven fifty. Now that property, the subject property, is over assessed. That's when we would begin to look at where is it over assessed?
Okay.
Right?
I, yeah, okay.
Your assessed value is always, whatever the tax card is.
Okay, I, I grant the assessed value is, the assessed value, whatever it says envisioned.
Yep.
If the comps say the house is really worth a million.
Yep.
On the market today. What is the, what is the proper value to use for computing the house, houses tax? Is that, is that the million less the, with, less the sixty-seven, sixty-nine percent?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, is that.
It does, I, I think I see, I've heard your explanation. I think, I think we're talking about a different way that it works. Okay. I, thank you. I think, I think I'm all set.
I mean, you have to have, the subject property has to have a value.
Of course.
Right? You equalize that value. That would tell you what the current value, the current market value of that property is. Okay?
Okay, let me stop. When you say we, you equalize the value, you're, you're essentially increasing it.
In this case, right now, based on the town's equalization rate. Yes, we would be. Because the town is, what, what the numbers are saying is that the town is under assessed.
Yes.
Okay? So the current values are at sixty-seven point nine percent of market value.
Okay.
Oh. So you are raising.
So if, so if, like I said, numbers aside, right? If you had, you're assessed at five hundred thousand and we factor in that at the equalization rate and it brings you, it says, oh, when we equalize you, your property is now seven hun, really seven hundred and fifty thousand in today's market. Okay? But the comps, comps being properties that have sold.
Right.
Are saying that it's, using your number, a million dollars, right? Then your property, that, that property, the subject property, is actually under assessed based on the comps.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I see how you're computing it, okay.
Yep.
I, I'm content, thank you.
You're applying it in a different place in the process from, from what we have been think, where we have been thinking that it is applied, as I understand. It, it's not like you take the assessed value and then charge taxes on sixty-five percent of that value because of the equalization ratio.
No. No. No.
Which is, I think what people have been thinking goes on.
Yeah, that's not.
Or should go on.
No, that's not the case.
Okay.
No, that's not the case. 'Cause that, that's what that's saying is that your property is only worth sixty-five percent. It's actually worth more than that.
So it's actually dividing by sixty-seven, sixty-five percent, yes, right?
That's showing what, that's saying this is what the market value of a property is. So that's where the comps.
So, okay, so there, so your current assessment is X when you divide by the sixty-seven percent.
Yep.
That says.
That's your best market value.
Current market value, that's the parent market value.
Assuming that all the information we have in the tax card is correct.
Oh, yeah, right, right, I mean, and so if that number was significantly more than a million, if that equalized value was significantly more than a million.
Yeah.
And you look at the comps and you say, oh, no, that's how it should be, a million. That then is the basis for coming up with a, a new assessed value and the basis of the abatement. Okay, that, I understand completely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is opposite in the direction of what people have been, they've been thinking about that and talking to us about it as a reduction applied.
No.
Okay.
Right.
Nope.
I think we got it.
Good.
Okay.
We've got a minute or two to go. I think we don't have anything more to do at this point, but that was really very helpful because we as a board keep getting these questions and we couldn't really answer them then. They were struggling with trying.
And that's why I say each tube, each abatement is looked at different. Yeah, I mean, everyone applies for a different reason.
It's not a blanket.
Yeah.
So there are times that you don't even look at the equalization rate because it just isn't needed.
I think they all apply 'cause they wanna pay less tax.
Yes, right.
That's, that's good, David.
This is time honored, this is time honored, but yes, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
We all appreciate it, thank you very much.
See ya.
Okay. Perfect, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Always has good clarity.
Yes, he, he is good at explaining things.
He explains it without using all the buzzwords.
Let's see, we have a ten thirty opening of the bids.
Right. Bid, bid.
Bid, bid.
Bid, bid. Pardon me?
Which, which bid to bid?
For the library, um, heat, the heat, no, the heat pump.
Oh, okay.
We just got one, huh?
Just one.
Oh. Ten twenty-seven, can we open it now?
Well, I was gonna ask that.
What'd you say, Jim, I'm just saying something.
I was just, I, I was hoping you'd open so I could tell who.
Oh, oh, who? I thought you said two and I'm like, ah, I only got one, who are you talking about?
I'm gonna build one in my backyard.
I don't think anybody's gonna come rushing in here to watch this, so.
Okay, let's open it then.
I think a few minutes early is perfectly fine. Okay, so I'm opening the one. It's from A R C Mechanical Contractors. It was received prior to the deadline.
Thank you.
They have different options? Were they supposed to have different options?
They always have different options.
Jim's back there laughing. Each option has a different price.
Of course.
So anywhere from twenty thousand to eighteen thousand, twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. This option one, which is a one dial zone. Option two is two single zones, eighteen thousand, two fifty. Another option is the same amount of money for a nineteen, a bigger, little bigger one, smaller one, I think.
What, what amount of money? The twenty thousand or the eighteen?
Eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty.
So two of them are at that price.
And then the electrical service for the outdoor part is twenty-five hundred. There you go.
Should we, uh, pass this along to the committee and let them?
We're supposed, we're supposed to now, yes, we will scam it and send it to them and then they will come back to you with a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Do you wanna bring this to Jordan? She can make you a copy right now.
That would be great.
I think she's in there.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, we're scooching right along. And. We've done the duty to report. Okay, review and discuss the town of Lyme apostrophe S telecommunications ordinance.
Missed that though.
I did miss that.
I just put that on there because I thought you'd wanna talk about that wonderful document I sent you guys for weekend reading and if you had any questions.
Miss A, um.
It's not limiting.
Do you have a copy of the telecommunications ordinance? You do now. Here you go, you're welcome.
Do you have any history on that, on, on this ordinance? What, what was the situation when it was passed?
Ben was on the planning board at the time.
At, at the time, any idea of a tower was scary to everybody. They put one up and it's a drive-in and offered and it was taken down and. They put one up and it's a drive-in in Orford and it was taken down and.
Yes.
Nobody really had cell phones, so it wasn't like anybody knew the advantage of it at the time, so I essentially say it's obsolete. That we're in an entirely different, um, time.
And, but, but basically what this ordinance does is it says, you can't put towers at all in the common or in Lime Center. And anyplace else you wanna put it, you have to go in and get approval from the planning board.
But, but again, uh, everything has changed since then, now everybody has a phone in their pocket.
Attitudinally, you mean, but, but ordinance hasn't changed, that's.
Ordinance hasn't changed, so.
But you know what, if you have specific questions on the, on the, um, ordinance, you should probably ask David to come in. Because I, I thought I was giving the impression that it really wasn't that restricted.
It doesn't look like it's that restrictive.
If I wanted to put a tower on my property out in Lime Center, I could do that.
My reading of the ordinance says that in, uh, well, if it's a personal thing, I think, but right now it says new, uh, under new tower construction, table three point one, it says Lime Center and the Lime Common, those are prohibited. Everyplace else it requires a conditional use permit, um, by the planning board, that's what the ordinance says. Well, um, Ben, did this go to town meeting or was this something that the select board just enacted?
If it's part of the planning and zoning ordinance, which it is, it would have been voted at town meeting.
Okay, so we can't just repeal this, we would have to, uh, we'd have to go back to town meeting and say, hey, this, you know, things have changed.
That's just the context of.
Well, if you need to change it, then that's the planning board's job, you need to tell them to start working on making changes to it and make it more sensible or whatever. But if you're talking about as errands here, and I'm, I don't know how much he's gonna, you know, fill you in on, but, um, you know, if there's a private entity or a business that wants to put one in, well, then they come to the planning board, they do their thing and they do it.
And today, in today's world, it, unless it was somehow really grossly over exaggerated, it would probably be approved. But at the time, I remember, because anyone that had a little hump of a hill in their yard was thinking, no, we could put up a tower.
Right, right.
Yeah, the panic spread.
And now self, cell phones are so important.
Well, and computers and.
It's a totally different thing.
Computers and emergency vehicles, we've got.
At that time, uh, the only places the tower, their, the tower companies wanted to put them was to hit the interstate.
Right.
They weren't, they weren't gonna service Lime with their tower, and so I think there was a proposal down on River Road or something like that.
Yeah.
Aaron, do you wanna jump in and tell us what?
Yeah, I'm twelve-ish years into conversations with cell phone tower providers, it goes.
They pay anybody out for that?
It goes through cycles of like getting some traction and then, my belief is behind the scenes, and it's kind of been brought forward, uh, by recent conversations, is we would hit a certain point and it would just stop. And my belief is that was due to the tower being taken down in Orford, um, that a lot of Lime signers signed that petition to get it taken down. And that put us on a list of do not build, uh, you're gonna get to the finish line, put a tower up, and they're gonna say no. Um, this is my belief, I, I, I hit the same point so many times and it would just stop, that, that's, that's how I feel, it's kinda laid out. Um, at this point, I have a builder, uh, who is looking in the community to put a tower up. Um, we are vetting locations to provide the best cell coverage in the community, um, for one or multiple towers, depending on what, what it lays out. Uh, and working to align, uh, property owners in those regions, uh, with the cell provider to start looking at, um, build timeframes. Um, to then approach a planning board to get the plan together and present it. Um, so as of yesterday, uh, there's a meeting scheduled for next week with one of the landowners. Um, and it looks like, if everything went unicorn world, about a year and a tower would be stood up. Um, but most likely it's eighteen months, uh, so we're looking through that and, and a big part of it is, a lot of our western, and this is just from Fire and EMS side, not property locations. A lot of our western facing bridges, when you get to elevation, you're able to get cell service to some degree. Um, our eastern facing bridges and anything in the valleys in between, you're done, you're not gonna find it. So there's definitely advantages to being more on the eastern side of time, town, which historically have not been, uh, areas that were served by, uh, fiber optics or other communication divide, uh, lines to actually allow a cell phone tower to be spooled up. Now with townwide fiber, that has changed. So it's given us more options to actually fix Lime's issue and not make it so that the interstate can see another tower, um, but actually get it so that Lime's coverage zones are, are covered. So that's where I'm at, um.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
I think we haven't formally voted or discussed anything, but I, I think I speak for the board in saying that we're supportive of getting some additional cell coverage for the Town of Lime, both for emergency purposes and also just for personal convenience of, of residents. And so if there's anything that the select board can do to facilitate or help with any of this stuff, come to us and we'll.
Once we get past what I'm gonna call the first date between the landowner and the, um, cell phone tower, I think it is, uh, cell phone company, I think it's a tower builder, it's on cell phone company, tower builder. I think it'd be appropriate for the select board to be kinda CC'd in on that and, but you guys have the communication with it.
And then thank you, by the way, just personally, thank you for your efforts on this.
Yes.
I've struck out so many times.
Just let me clear up though, it's not gonna be a municipal tower, it would be a.
Not at this point, but.
It would be on somebody's private land.
Correct, but hypothetically, what we'll have to come to the board to discuss at a later point is if the unicorn spot is on a town property, does the town wanna look at doing that?
I would.
I would too, so.
Would it be useful for us to make a motion in support of what you're doing?
I, I think.
Would that help?
I think from an informal perspective, I have told the companies that there is more support for this than there's ever been.
Right.
Um, I, I don't think it's a bad thing to have, if you guys have like a sense of the meeting kinda scenario, say, hey, we're in support of this, to just say, listen.
I think we should, yeah. But.
So I move we do that.
Thank you, Ben.
Awesome, Jim.
Thank you, David. Um, and this is a, a board support for going forward and looking at what can be done to increase coverage.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. So you have a formal motion.
Perfect.
That was a support.
Behind the scenes, if it ends up being on a land, a municipal land hypothetically, that they come forward and say, hey, this is the spot. I have three people willing to donate probably the entire cost of putting a cell phone tower up at this point. Um, so.
That's a big, that's a big, uh.
So then it would really come down to, uh, and I'm sure that if we crowdsourced anything else that was needed, it, it would happen very quickly. Um, I, I think at this point. If we find the unicorn spot that's on town property, there's other logistics that we'll have.
Just come to us if that happens and figure it out.
Don't worry about explaining too much right now.
Yeah.
We will need full explanation later, but we support your ongoing efforts.
And as soon as I can, I will gladly hand this off.
Well.
So, yeah.
In connection with that, if you need, uh, a, a hand.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be happy to help you.
Okay, okay, all right. Good?
Very good, thank you very much.
Perfect, you're welcome.
Thanks for squeezing, squeezing that in today, I know you're busy.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, no worries, thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you. Okay.
Get a lawyer involved, that'll really gum things up.
Um, let's talk about a bear ordinance.
What would you like to talk about it?
Well, it's on the agenda. Discuss.
You're trying to stir the pot. You are.
Ben, do you wanna kinda walk this through? We've got some sample ordinances, they seem quite similar each to the other.
Yeah, there's, um, there are periods in this town that bear activity is largely driven by natural foods. So there's a lot of natural food, there's gonna be less activity around food attractions and things like that. Historically, I've paid attention to movements of both bears and people's comments on listservs. There are times when there's a lot of bear activity in town due to attractions mostly from dumpsters that are eating establishments. We've made the Killam Bear Center has made an effort to curb that. We, we, uh, purchased a bear food dumpster for one of the, uh, establishments and then another provider came along and offered cheaper dumpster without, uh, bear food cover and so left standing to that. And I know there's multiple bears, the most I've counted on listserv assess- assessments. And ones that I've seen person, personally, uh, has been updated, different bears. Bears follow each other to food, so when there's a food shortage, if there's a source of food, they'll pick up on the other bear scent and come in and find out where that food source is. And if you wanna go see evidence of this, you can go to any cornfield in Lime. And pick up the bear trails, come into the cornfield and you can follow them out for miles. There's marked trees along those cornfields and the bears follow themselves into the corn, into the food sources. They're very good at communicating, especially in times, you know, they evolve in, in a feast or famine situation, one year there's nuts, another year there's none, no nuts, then there's a drought. So they've gotta shift their feeding, um. Behavior based on that. The other thing that these open dumpsters bring is raccoons. Raccoons also bring rabies, they're rabies vector. So, and other not so nice wildlife diseases. It's not highly visible to people, uh, unless they happen to see a bear poop on the common. But, uh, when the bears are at one of the establishments pooping on the common, they spend their days at Big Rock, you know, natural area there.
Chilling in the brook.
Chilling in the brook, waiting for the next night to go heat, so. I have, uh, because one of the bears wore a GPS collar, I have a lot of data. She was kind of a, um, I think her name, the Judas bear.
The ringleader.
Went around telling on everybody where the.
Tattling.
Yeah. So, um, you can see the activities, I mean, I can have that scene, and again, not, she, she was the one that I have the most data on, but there are plenty others. And, and when, again, it's based on natural food source, uh, sources, so there's plenty of abundant natural foods, it's very selective, if there's low.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that, if there's lots of natural food, but also, you know, spoiled cold cuts in the dumpster, they.
They prefer, uh, natural food where it's secure, they'll take higher risk when they're forced. And it's risky coming in around people.
I see.
But they like ice cream.
They do like ice cream a lot.
They like donuts too, if you go buy Hanover.
Ice cream and donuts, who wouldn't?
Yes.
And, you know, they, these problems exist in, in all towns, all towns have dealt with them differently. Uh, these are just some of the ordinances that have been written up around the state, um, trying to deal with these situations.
So what these ordinances basically say is you'll bear proof your garbage.
Right.
And if you don't, we'll fine you.
Yeah. But, you know, the main thing I wanted to do by getting it on the record is making people aware, uh, that if there are bears around, they're here for a reason. They're here because they're being fed somewhere.
Do you know, do you know what the legal, uh, status of this sort of an ordinance is? Is this something that has to go to town meeting or is this something that the select board can enact unilaterally?
It's my understanding that you need to have, no, you need to discuss it in a meeting, you need to have a public hearing on it, and then I believe it needs to be voted at town meeting.
So this is a town meeting.
Cause it's a ordinance.
Okay. Could you, can we confirm that with town council, just so we know what the rules are that were, by what rules were planned?
Right, well, and I didn't have a chance, um, prior to this meeting, but there's an RSA that pertains to it, so.
Okay.
One forty-seven, so we can look that up.
It should be pretty good.
Okay.
Well, Ben, thank you for introducing this, it is food for thought and it is, uh, I'm sure there will be sides drawn, but it, it's, um. It's unfortunate, when we first brought this up, I was thinking that the town could purchase for the commercial establishments, the correct kind of dumpster with the correct kind of lid. Which would make it easy to go from there, but then we discovered that the, the cost, there's a disparity between the company that services those containers and the regular old dumpsters that are less expensive.
How much is that disparity, do you, does anyone know?
Well, the, the overall, uh, cost wouldn't be extraordinary and certainly could be handled privately, uh, if we could get the inexpensive dumpster guy to agree and the people would agree not to change their dumpster companies on a regular basis.
I was gonna say, it would be, it would be purchasing the lock top, the bar, the bar and the padlock and all that stuff.
A steel top and.
And, right.
And, and we'd own them, so, and, but there, there's different sized dumpsters, so different dumpster companies have different roll-offs.
Right.
They're trying to get, uh.
But that doesn't address the residential part of it. You know, are you gonna supply something for everybody?
That's true, but.
I mean, you have to be careful, I'm just thinking practically here.
But the biggest, uh, question is.
I don't know that there's much, um, resi- residential probably know that, um. Many, many of them are able to just, uh, use, using electric fence and keep the bears out. It's more complicated if there's a paved surface underneath the dumpster to get it looked at.
Well, I know, but you're not gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate, okay? But you're not gonna insist that everybody has, you know, electric fence around their garbage.
Well, we can. No, no. And it, it might already be in the Lime Common, just.
I mean, you just have to do your surface. And maybe you want, right, when you're writing it, think of, those are the things you guys need to think of as you work on this. What, um, you know, whether you wanted to pertain to all wild animals, whether you wanted to pertain to residential and business, whether you, you know, and the ramifications of that.
Food for thought.
You know, I, I, I personally per- prefer that people, um. Didn't have to be forced to comply.
Right.
To come up with a way.
Right.
Well, with respect to the couple of big commercial, um.
I think they're four.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that the Killam Bear Center might be able to work correctly with those, those, uh, business owners and subsidize the cost differential between.
Well, it, it, the problem I had with that is that, that we did that and then they changed their thing and boom, it all goes out the door.
I, I will say that a local business person came in and said that if you guys were going to start drafting this and really talking about it, they'd like to be involved. So it could be something that you.
Oh, I'd have to, have to, everybody involved.
Wanna reach out to, right, the local businesses or whatever, whatever direction you end up in.
The, the problem with, you know, well, we pay for it and then they change, I mean, that could be easily addressed by just having a simple agreement with the, you know, with the business owner that says, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pay X, we're gonna give you this money, we're gonna do this. And in exchange, you agree that you're gonna use this stuff and not change it for a period of however many years or.
I, I think what.
We probably were operating on a handshake sort of basis and.
I think what we do is, as far as the Bear Center goes, is to set up a fund where people could make tax deductible donations to support just.
Yeah, cause it shouldn't come from tax dollars.
Shouldn't come from tax dollars and it shouldn't, it shouldn't be the owners of the Bear Center to do it all either.
Right, right.
People down are gonna benefit by not having large carnivores falling around their back.
I'll be curious to see how this goes.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, the main thing is having a discussion, so.
Yeah, exactly, and inviting whomever.
Yes.
So you could have like a little public meeting night, you know.
But I could, I could prepare some maps that'll show a move backyards there and when they come in and down, but you'd be surprised.
But we're working into budget season too, so it's gonna get busy, so.
Yeah, it will get busy.
There's, there's no rush on this, this season is over, so we go into
Right, but if you wanna address it at this next town meeting, then you, you need to get
Well, you might also check and see what these other towns
That's one.
Whether they went to town meetings or they just were ordinance assigned by the
So Lincoln.
We didn't go to the town meeting for our alcohol ordinance or our
That's right, we didn't, we just did a
Yeah, I'll find out, well, some you can and some you can't, that's right, so, right, we'll find that out.
So we will. I think we need to move along.
Judy, could I ask a quick question? After you solved the problem, you have bear-proof dumpsters and all, how quickly did the bears figure out, well, this is no fun and
Immediately, I have data on that too, because we put the dumpster, the bear-proof dumpster at the country store, I have the data before and after.
So they, they say, there's, there's no value here anymore, I'm not gonna waste my time.
And back, that lasted a long time until they smelled and said, oh, there's ice cream back available.
Right, okay.
Michael has a lot of experience with this in town where he might wanna say a few words.
Yeah, there's other towns that have done regulations that have been fairly quite successful and the bears in Hanover changed their behavior the day they put them in. I mean, it wasn't twenty-four hours, they snuffed in, they came in on their normal route and they left Dartmouth College, saw the problem, saw the value of not having carnivores kicking around and in a period
The non-human carnivore.
Yeah, the three, the three-year period where they were cutting staffing and cutting costs, they changed how they managed their waste. Instead of having like a hundred plus dumpsters all over campus, they dropped that down and they literally hired people and hired two little mini dump trucks, little garbage trucks. And instead of having garbage and food sources, they got rid of it and the bear population and the bear interactions evaporated on campus. And it's garbage and we get from, also of garmit, chest freezers in other places that we got and where we would have problem places, people would freeze their garbage until pickup and it the, the interactions, positive and negative in Hanover, dropped off dramatically after putting in. And that's without a garbage regulation, but that's with a lot of very informed residents and businesses who modified their behavior to reduce the interactions.
Thank you, Michael. Okay.
We really don't need an ordinance, we just need Michael, Sonic, it's a fair deficit.
Mine is, it's, there's a lot of things, a regulation is a helpful thing.
Right.
And for, but mine is, there's lots of things that a municipality can do, but there's way more things that the people inside of town can accomplish successfully.
And, and it doesn't have to be an ordinance, it can be, like you said, a regulation, a bylaw, those are different.
Yes.
Correct.
And, and education of people.
Constant, constant, but the, the reality is, in having that regulation and ordinance in place is really important. The big, one of the key things in Hanover is who's gonna enforce it.
Right.
And how, and that was one of the reasons why they did not put one in, but what I can say is that as an, as an ordinance for an educational component and the big stick is really a helpful thing.
Okay. I'm gonna jump over the discussing the code of ethics, ethics policy to consideration of exempt properties. While Michael is here, because one of those exempt properties is the Killen Bear Center and we will need a motion and a vote to appoint him to sit in to vote on the Killen Bear Center.
I'll move it.
Thank you, David.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ben.
We'll refuse ourselves.
You can refuse yourselves, oh, wait, you should vote, we all vote for Michael.
David.
Judy, I.
At the moment, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Michael.
So will we do? I gotta think fifteen, I, I didn't.
We're doing the Killen thing.
The Killen Bear Center.
There we go.
We did it once before.
Oh, no, you said something about coming in, I'm still fine, yeah, I will come in, but, here we go.
And we do have a, a large list, but the one that we are having Michael's here for, is the Killen Bear Center. And the land portion of the property, we believe that was written
Is it written?
An old previous review by the assessor. Because last year, we spent a great deal of time with this. And the Killen Bear Center had an attorney who specifically worked on making the bill, the Killen Bear Center meet all the regulations to be able to be granted an exemption.
Correct.
And so what we have this year from the assessor who was not involved last year is what was last year's initial report. So
And he recommended that you contact your town attorney.
Right.
Which we did.
We did, and the town attorney recommended that it's their understanding and they talked to the Killen Bear Center's attorney, I believe, everything has been done as it should be done and is recorded and that it does qualify for an exemption.
Okay, so my understanding is, a few years ago, when we did, we had a meeting, we did this, then it was a there was a challenge to it? And so with, after that challenge, it was meant to be shown to be qualifying as an exemption.
It does qualify because after that challenge, the Killen Bear Center paid the tax, but hired a law firm to cure any
Right.
anything that was keeping it from qualifying, which my understanding was that they were doing a lease on the portion of the property.
Right.
And now
And now it's not a lease, it's a deed.
It's a deed.
So we're also, and each year they have to look at it again.
Right, 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 but it's
But, but we shouldn't have this report about the lease, which is what made us
Right.
understand that
Well, that would not be our first, first tax exempt business or situation that has evolved
That's correct.
to become more compliant.
Right.
Okay?
And laws change too.
And, well, that's not what I, yeah.
As far as what qualifies, we're talking about, so, so things have to change.
So I, I will move that we grant the Killen Bear Center tax, the tax exemption.
I would second that.
Thank you, Michael. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Michael.
Aye.
And Judy, aye, it is approved.
Okay, please pass this to Michael so that he can sign this.
And we appreciate you coming into
To do that, no, mine's, yeah, something's
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. You need a pen? Oh, that's a pen, because you don't wanna do that.
Exactly.
You don't wanna have to replace it should anything go wrong. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I would, that, I, the wind's breaking up and I'm taking a young man sailing, so.
Ooh.
Move that you leave.
I leave, I need to do the appropriate thing.
You're excused.
And then Ray's appoint them
Yes.
To
Come back in and do the rest of them.
Okay?
Thank you.
Michael, aye.
Judy, aye.
Good. Thank you, Dina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God, I can't believe this, I killed your pen too, Judy.
Well, that's why I'm gonna use a second one.
Oh, now it's working, Jesus, I'm telling you.
Okay, so then twenty-five, all right, you got this one.
And we can do some more of these too.
Yes, let's get the rest of them as many as we can.
They're out there in the hallway anyway, yeah, yeah, I guess.
Okay.
That's an extra one.
This one, tips. Yes.
You can't get away from my
Thank you, Michael.
No. Okay.
All right, we have to take up at least a few more.
Just as a, a town resident denied, my select board, as you want to be decided.
The Killen Bear Center has been approved unanimously for an exemption with the understanding that last year, Regal was hired by Bear Center to make sure they had all their ducks in a row and the information first received here was incorrect. All right, now. I've tried, this is our third attempt to go through most of these. The American Legion, I believe we discussed this, I don't know if we voted, but the way to do this properly is to deny it because they are
No more.
No more, and then when they reorganize or they, whatever they're gonna do, then we can look at abating. So they will be getting us, is that correct?
I, I think that's correct and if they, I mean, Dina suggested that they, they were in the process of dissolution and that they maybe wanted to give the property to the town line, that happens, we could take the property and, you know, in
In return.
In return for cancellation of the tax debt.
Oh, you would have just abated, right, because they're not gonna, and they're not in the process of dissolution, they have dissolved, they are no more.
Well, so if that's the case, then they can't make any decisions, so I don't know how they're gonna decide to give us the property.
Well, I don't know all the specifics and the person that needs to come in and talk to you needs to be that person.
Do you know who it is?
Yes, it's Sean O'Keefe. He's, he's the commander of the
All right, so we should have Sean come and talk. But if, if they're, this gets tricky and this is something I dealt with in my former life in advising nonprofits, is that if you're, if you lose your board or you don't have anyone to make decisions, then it becomes hard to make, to act legally and you can't do the things you need to do to dissolve and, or to, or to resolve these sorts of issues.
And I think it has to do with where the land, where it originally came from.
Okay, well, so Sean should come in and help. But right now, we can't, we have to deny their abatement.
Right, okay.
Or their exempt status.
No, it's not an abatement, right.
Yeah, their exempt status because they didn't file a paperwork.
Okay.
Well, that's because they were told not to file it. They've never had to file it. Because the legion has never been required to file it and all of a sudden, our tax assessor says they have to, so.
Well, and that's also because
But either way, doesn't matter.
They're getting more strict.
Yep.
Okay.
But that's not his fault, that's my fault.
I wrote down that we're denying the American Legion.
Yep.
Are we good with that?
Should we go for it?
Yes, I, I, I'll move it.
Okay.
I'll second.
David and Ben, all those in favor say aye.
Ben on.
Ben on.
Judy, aye, okay.
Okay.
Got it done. One, two, three, we're waiting in Dartmouth College Ski Way.
Well, wait, you have number two, Benedictine.
Yeah.
All my neighbors.
Their, their place is just falling into the dirt.
Is it really?
Yeah.
My
You have the wrong list.
My list says wait, I have a wait on that. Benedictine.
Interesting, I have a thing here for you to sign, it says timely file recommend.
Okay.
They'll beat their taxes, just letting that go on the right on.
Well, they're going to the, the land that he talks about in here, careful that was all
Thank you. All right, Dina, you walk us through because your list and my list appear to be different.
I'm just doing what I was given, so.
Okay.
So yes, the Benedictine, Ben has that right there, it's recommended, filed timely and yes. And they have two pieces of property, one is in current use that they pay taxes on and the other one is exempt building and the land under the building and the rest of the land will be current use.
Okay. Yeah, somebody we deal with there, is there somebody who's responsible?
Yeah, there's enough who calls and talks and
Okay, so, I'll move it.
I'll second it.
And this is to grant?
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
Although one we just signed, Ben, is for the First Baptist Church, which hasn't come before us yet.
Um
Overall, though.
I do not have, Upper Valley Land Trust is one that is waiting because there's some other stuff that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
And the same thing with Crossroads Academy.
So we're waiting on that one?
Yep.
Okay.
Some land that should be in current use that we don't think is, so. Dartmouth College Ski Way. This one is recommended to deny this exemption. They didn't respond to a request for the Ski Way's financial information. And then we had a recommendation from your attorney.
Yes, I will move that we continue with the current method of taxing the Ski Way and abating part of those taxes as we have done in the past, based on an agreement from the past. And within this next year, we will look to resolve the issues of whether or not it is educational or whether it is commercial. So we're kicking the can down the road one more year.
I'll second that.
So you moved to follow the same
Yep. What's been done in the past.
Same written agreement.
When, when we reached out to the Dartmouth Ski Way folks
Yep.
Did they, what was their response to us on any of this stuff? You know, in the past, on, on other issues, we've had this accusation that we sort of sandbagged them and, you know, we didn't tell them and here we've sort of reached out to them and I'm, I'm curious
I was surprised, actually, every year when they pass in their paperwork, they have financials with it. So when our assessor went to visit their property and was shown around by Mark, the last thing he said to Mark was, well, I need to see some financials because of, you know, your rentals and this and that and all the other stuff. And that was okay, that was fine, and then we never got them. And then I emailed and the response from their legal department was that we couldn't have them.
So something has changed, but I think we need to reach out one more time with them, with
Well, I, yeah, and I, I don't know, I mean, this is just me thinking here. The agreement that you have with them is really old.
Yep.
But it's an agreement that was signed in two thousand and two, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't continue to go by it until you get to meet with them and talk with them and work, try to work something out so that everybody's not try to work something out so that everybody's not angry with each other.
So I have a motion on the floor to follow the agreement one more year, and in the meantime, hopefully, we can work something out, and I have a second.
Ben?
Further discussion. Ben's voted, what did you say?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll support that.
Okay, and me too. So that's approved to follow the agreement, but we must, must, must work this year to get that resolved.
Right, and it's not like they don't pay any taxes, because they do.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't really even know what to do about this. I don't, I think if you have a written agree with, with them, why do they even do this? Why do they even do this exempt? Why do we have to do this exempt?
I think because, um, the question is, is it still really valid after all this time, and the state has changed how they're looking at everything? So there could be a question about the decisions that were made that long ago, and whether or not.
Right, but.
We are.
And we also got advice of counsel on this, on this agreement, and I'm hesitant to discuss that in public setting because I don't wanna, I don't want to waive confidentiality of our, of the legal advice we're giving, but, but that bears on this question as well.
So I don't, yeah. Yeah, I don't think you should vote on the exemption at all. I think you're voting to just stick with the agreement.
Well, that's what I, that's what I proposed.
And if we need to talk about that. I know, but I have the, the exemption sheet in front of me.
Okay.
So I don't know what you wanna do with that. Okay, thank you.
First Baptist Church of Lime.
I'll move it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Second.
Let me look, let me look.
Yep, David and Ben. It says they're recommending granting the exemption.
Yeah, except I don't have it right here in front of me, so that means that you can't vote.
It's right here. They already signed it.
Oh, you have it, okay.
It went to Ben and then to David. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay.
Well.
You're up next.
Okay, I'm really confused. Is that the Benedictine thing or Baptist Church?
First Baptist Church of Lime, right here. Here is. American Legion.
I don't know where that came from then. Anyways, Lime Nursery School. That's the next one. Timely filed, I recommend.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, give me a second. The nursery school.
Yep.
Ben moved it, David seconded it.
Yes.
To grant the exemption.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye.
Okay, Pathways. Same thing, timely filed.
Pathways, River Valley, timely filed. Being used for its intended charitable mission should be exempt.
I'll move it.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. It's approved.
Lime Historians.
I'll move this. Let's see the remainder. We're granting. There is an apartment upstairs is not considered exempt, therefore fifty percent of the property is considered taxable. The remainder, grant the exemption. I will move that.
Second.
Thank you, David.
Ben, aye.
All those in favor say aye. Thank you, Ben.
Ben, aye.
Thank you, David. Judy, aye. That is approved.
And then you have one more, the Center for Northern Woodlands. It's the same kind of thing. Uh, oh, no, it isn't. I take that back. They didn't file any paperwork, so they should be, not denied.
Okay, um.
I mean, they have an opportunity to come back to you and say, give you reasons why they didn't file it, but.
Which organization is that?
Center.
Center for Northern Woodlands.
Thank you.
They, they didn't file one.
Right.
A lot of times with these little volunteer organizations, stuff just falls into cracks. Nobody's open to the mail, timely, or some, you know.
Totally get it, that's right.
A thinks B is handling it, and B is.
No longer working there.
Yeah, taking their money.
Even the bigger ones, it happens, but, but I'll, I'll check with Jordan because for some reason, I remember us discussing, and I can't say that she did it because I'd have to ask her, um, to, to send a reminder out to them. And, you know, if we did that, well.
Wasn't there a conversation?
It could still fall through a crack.
Stuff like that, so probably a lot easier to forget about.
Right, right. It is very easy to forget about it once a year.
Was there a conversation about them using only a part of their building and renting out the rest? Am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, so they have a percentage, a percentage that they pay taxes on, just like the Historians.
It's another one, one percent, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So those are the ones that Jordan gave me that were complete to move ahead with.
What about the Upper Valley Land Trust?
There is a current use land, um, thing that we're checking on.
Okay, awesome.
And so what are we doing with the center? Are we gonna deny it, or are we gonna wait and see if in fact they got a reminder?
You need to deny it, because they didn't send in the paperwork. Even, we are, we are not obligated to, to remind them.
I know, but.
But I'm just saying that should factor into your decision. They either did the paperwork, or they didn't. You deny it, we let them know, then they could come back to you and say, can you abate this, whatever the amount is, because this is why we didn't file.
It's fine.
And if you think that's.
Okay, I'll move to deny.
Second.
Thank you, David.
Ben, aye. Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. That's denied.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I'm sorry to say that, because it does make sense to think that you could. But the DRA, I think, would be extremely unhappy with you.
Well, you don't want.
That's okay, I'm unhappy with that.
Yes. So we're going to be, we're waiting.
They don't seem to be happy people.
We're waiting on Upper Valley Land Trust, Crossroads, Lime Congregational Church, and Center for Northern Woodlands.
Yeah, except for when you said you had the Baptist Church. I thought you voted on the Benedictine thing, and I don't see it here anyways, so, anywhere, so. So you still have that one to do.
We, we voted on them. I moved it, David seconded it.
I know.
To grant.
You don't have to give me the form. I don't have.
That's because I think I thought this one was.
That's the Baptist Church.
The Benedictine, right.
Right, okay.
Sweet, I like. We're not, we're not voting on that. Sorry, I just. Thank you.
Okay.
So hopefully, the next meeting, we'll be back with all the other, the rest of them.
Okay, so, that would be nice. And now we have non-public.
So we probably spent like three hours dealing with all this stuff, and the amount of tax dollars involved is probably like eighty, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars or something.
I know. Yeah, it, it takes a long time, and, and you think you're ready, and then you're not, and it's very frustrating.
Well, the amount of time, right, going.
Back and forth.
In that office is craziness.
Okay, so.
Oh. You have, you already did that. You've got to sign it.
We did that, we've got to sign that, okay.
You just gotta sign it.
Are we gonna go into non-public session now, Deana?
You have an item on here about a code of ethics.
Right, and we punted past that.
Right.
To do this, but if we need to have an eleven fifteen non-public session, then we'll bring up the code of ethics at the next meeting.
That's up to you. You can do the code of ethics. The time does not matter. You don't have somebody coming this time. I thought we had, um, legal plates next week, amazing, next meeting.
He was, he's in the middle of trial or something.
Right.
How are you?
You couldn't do it.
Natalie coming with your new people.
Our new people?
Yeah, I thought you were getting a part-time person and Emily.
We're working on it, but we have one application, that's all, right now. Well, no, two. We actually have our second, but.
How come we just don't drive for response to?
I don't know. The highway guys have gotten none.
I know.
None, zero, zip. It's amazing. I don't know what the problem is. I don't know if it's the time of year.
That's gonna be a problem going into the winter, you know, get somebody in the highway.
By the highway, sure is. Yeah, Scott's fairly stressed about it.
Okay, so we don't have an eleven fifteen that we have to make that we've already gone by. Let's take up our first discussion of the code of ethics policies. And it's still a draft, very much a draft, but come to find out, most municipalities, regardless of size, have, um, a code of ethics that committee members and board members and commission members all agree to follow. So this was the first step. And it includes, well, uh, act in the best interest of the town, probably disclose any potential conflict of interest, whether personal or pecuniary. Acuse themselves from decision-making. If there is a conflict of interest, and there's a special paragraph about conflict of interest. Be honest, independent, impartial, responsible, make decisions and policies through the proper channels and procedures, and openly conduct the business, and then it has a scope of authority and definitions and procedures. Um, which I'm not gonna read all of this. And complaints and enforcement and approval. And it will go to town meeting in March.
Yes.
Well, we decide.
Well, if you guys decide that, right, and if you guys are, or when you're comfortable with it, it can certainly be posted on the web for people to read, and then, um, you know, you should probably have a public hearing.
Yep.
About it.
Yeah, I'm happy to move that we post it on the web and schedule a public hearing for it. Right now, we already have a, an ethical code that applies just to the select board, but I feel that we oughta, that that ought to apply to, that we oughta have something that applies to everyone who's serving on town committees so that we don't have abuses and we don't have problems. Um, my understanding of the legal requirements are that you can, that a, a town can enact this kind of a, a, an ordinance, but that it has to be voted on in town meeting, and there has to be a, a, a grandfather period so that people who are serving on existing committees, uh, have a number of years before they're required to come into court.
One year.
So one or two.
One, I'm looking at the, it's an RSA, actually, thirty-one colon thirty-nine A. When the, uh, when, at the time of the ordinance is adopted for a period not to exceed one year from the date they have to.
I will second that, David.
Okay. Um, just, I, I can talk about this in the hearing too, but I, I, this is my draft, or I, you guys haven't looked at it, but I was the one who took the labor and wanted to put this together. The way I did that is I went out and looked at every single town that I could find in New Hampshire that has a similar ordinance and compared them all and tried to take the best out of all of them. Soed it together.
Ben, aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
Has been reviewed by legal also.
Yeah, well, I did.
Then they did like it.
Thank you, David. That's a lot of work.
That is.
It was a lot of work, actually.
It is a lot of work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Who seconded that? I'm sorry.
I did.
Thank you.
The old lady.
It's him. Oh, I'm not gonna write that down.
Okay, so that is going to become posted, become public, and we will schedule a time to have a public hearing on it.
I can record on one more thing for town meeting, if you'd like.
Okay. Sure.
Just so you're all prepared. The law has changed once again for the veterans' property tax credit. So we have a five hundred dollar, every veteran automatically, not automatically, but they fill out paperwork, they get a five hundred dollar credit. Then, um, we have a disability credit section, and that's two thousand dollars.
Can I just pause you for a second? That veterans' credit, it is not means tested. It's, so if you're, if you own a seven million dollar property and your income is a million dollars a year, you still get the five hundred?
You still get it. Get it for being a veteran, exactly. It's not, not money-based. And, um, same with disability. You qualify because the doctor says you qualify, and it's, some go by percentages and some are a hundred percent and all that. So, uh, now, what they're saying, um, legis, legislation has changed that they can't have each. They can't have the five hundred, and they can't have the two thousand together, so they can only have one or the other. Well, of course, they're gonna pick the two thousand, but then they don't get the five hundred either. So the choice is, and they've spelt this out in the paperwork that you guys should have, that says, um, you can change that two thousand, you can change the, the disability one um, up to anywhere to five thousand dollars, but what you could do is take that five hundred and make the disability twenty-five hundred. Then they wouldn't be losing anything.
Does this have to be across the board, or is it case by case?
I would think you'd have to qualify for a disability.
Well, you have to qualify by, by a doctor. You have to qualify.
Right.
Right, so you get.
Well, you don't get an extra five hundred for being a veteran.
So you get the two thousand dollars, but you, then you don't get your, right, you don't get your five hundred dollars for being a veteran. So they're losing money, our veterans are.
If they're disabled.
The veterans' disability is, is different than the regular disability.
Oh, so this is a specific veterans' disability.
This is, exactly. That's right.
I got it.
That's right.
So in other words, what you're saying is to avoid the loss, you just up the amount of the veterans' disability benefit to twenty-five hundred dollars, and then they're where they would have been.
Right. I mean, you, you, you have the option of changing it to anywhere up to five thousand dollars, or the town does, if they want to.
This has to go to town meeting, right?
Yes, it has to be a warrant.
And the, but we're gonna keep the veterans' tax exempt, the, the five hundred dollars, because there be some veterans who aren't disabled.
Correct, you have to keep that. You don't get rid of that.
Sound it.
Just so that they don't get it, and they also get the disabled.
Right.
If you're disabled, you have to choose. You can only have one.
Okay.
So that'll be a warrant article, awesome.
Well, what do we wanna do?
You should think about it. Have you read this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I wonder if we oughta bring it up at another town, another slideboard meeting that's noticed, and that way we give people the opportunity to come in and sound off on it.
I would like to do that, because.
It's a public hearing, but.
And can I make a suggestion?
Like we could stop you.
Well, I can make it later to each one of you by myself if I want to, but, um, the elderly exemptions were addressed and increased significantly.
Yes.
The regular disability exemption was not looked at, not the veterans' one, but the regular one. And I think it's only fair that that gets looked at and, and should come up to, you know,
Yeah, I'd bring it up to the.
The price of things nowadays.
I, I completely agree. My impulse on this is to bring it up to whatever the maximum is that we're permitted to do.
Well, in, in the disability things, it, it used to match the tier one of the elderly, which is sixty-five to seventy-four years old, or whatever it is. So those amounts used to match. So the disability should definitely come up.
Yeah, two thousand dollars doesn't do much in today's world. Five hundred does even less.
So these are just tax abatements though, right?
They're not abatements. They're exemptions.
Exemption, but so if you don't, if you're not paying five thousand dollars in property tax, then you don't get that benefit. You just, it, it only takes you down to zero. It doesn't go negative.
Right, well, it doesn't go negatively, yes, they don't get a credit back, if that's what you're asking, absolutely not.
Well, so, there's another limit on all of this, and that limit is, what, what is your property tax bill, and so.
Right.
If you have someone who's of modest means, a disabled veteran who's living modestly and doesn't, isn't paying, you know, has a, has a twelve hundred or a, 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 a two thousand dollar a year property tax bill, that's all they're gonna get from any of this stuff.
Right, they don't get extra, but the regular disability is based on the income, it's, you have to meet the income criteria and the, and the asset criteria, and then once you're there, you get, I would suspect, like I said, the lowest elderly one should probably match it, but I don't know, we can look around and see, and if your property is worth, and that comes off the assessed value, whereas the veterans' credit comes off the actual tax bill, so if you have a tax bill of twenty-five hundred dollars, you get zero, if you have an assessed value of six hundred, or, well, you're not gonna qualify probably if you're at, look, three hundred, say, and your, your exemption is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, then you pay taxes on the difference. For the regular disability. So.
All right.
So we're gonna.
So we can at least look at it.
Look around and then we'll put this on next, next agenda, while it's still fresh in our minds.
Well, yeah, it'll be nice to have it done early enough, so we're not last minute dashing to get it on the.
Yeah.
On the, on the warrant, right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, what else?
I think that's the only other thing I want to clarify with you guys, is Mark from the skiway had sent an email, that I sent you guys a while ago, about the guardrails, asking about following up on the discussion that, that he had with the police from the guardrails. I have not responded to him yet, and it should get responded to, but I have Sean's, this is Sean, and this is when Sean met, Sean and Scott and Tony Hall met with Mark. There was nothing left in this discussion that there was.
For a follow-up.
They didn't end up, that they, yeah, they didn't end the discussion saying, okay, well, I'll come back together and make a decision, these three feel the decision's already made.
So, it's interesting, when we, at the end of the last ski season, we invited our then-chief of police and our road agent to come talk to us, and tell us, how do you think the guardrails went? Because when we put those in, we said, well, if this doesn't work, we want, you know, we can reconsider. Both of those people, my impression from talk, from, from what they told us, was that both of them felt that the guardrails had been relatively successful, and had accomplished what they had wanted to accomplish, and at that time, we publicly said, hey, look, you know, we'd like to hear from the skiway people too, if they wanna come talk to us and tell us this was a disaster, or, you know, we could change this and it would work better, or, hey, I, I, I would've been, I'm, I'm very anxious to get their input as well, I don't wanna sandbag them, as far as I know, they never.
Well, we heard, no, Mark, Mark came, and he did say, in his opinion, the only way leaving the guardrails and making it better would be to break it in the middle, so that there was.
Was I not here for that meeting?
Maybe not.
I wonder if you weren't, because they.
And then you guys sent them back to me, talk about all three of them.
Right, yeah, and he was staying firm that, yeah, he was pretty annoyed at first, but eventually, that, it's just never gonna work unless it works the way we want it to work, that's my paraphrase, and, and we also heard from emergency services that it worked much better with the guardrails and the highway crew.
Okay, so then there's a miscommunication going on here, because it sounds like Mark is under one impression, and if he, or either that, or we have some disingenuous, disingenuity here going on, but.
I think that maybe some of each.
Maybe, whatever, but, the, the way to resolve that is to get Mark and Tony and us in the room together and hash it out. Tina's looking at.
I'm looking at you, I, I don't think there's anything to hash out, I think that you guys got given this letter from Sean and Tony and Scott, and they made it clear, and a response, I mean, you can certainly invite Mark to come, that's fine, whatever, I'm just saying.
Well, but Mark is now telling us.
But a written response back to Mark, who is saying, I'm following up on our discussions earlier this summer, has there been a decision reached about opening the guardrails opposite the entrance to the inner lot? Yes, there's been a decision made, the answer's no, if you can let me know this answer, that's essentially his email.
I think that's, I think that's the answer, and that's the feedback we got.
Well, that's probably right, but it sounds like what Mark is saying is, after, after all of this, I talked to your police people and your road agent, and they were agreeable to making changes to the guardrail.
See, I don't think they were agreeable, so.
Well, I don't know, well, yeah, I don't, I'm not taking a position on whether, on what they said when they met, but it sounds like Mark has a different impression than what we have. And so, I, I'd like to get that sorted out, I'm, just personally, I.
I, I know that Scott is hesitant to do anything on that road until there is a, well.
Until he knows for sure that you guys aren't gonna change your mind, or that you're gonna change, tell him to do something differently than what the police and, and highway and that's blah blah.
My, my view on this, just as a selectman, is, I'm very inclined to follow the advice of our public safety officials, and I'm somewhat skeptical of the advice of outside private parties, and I'm also a little bit skeptical of the, the feelings of some of our residents who seem to be more personally affiliated with the skiway than with the town. But, that said, I'm not opposed to making changes to the, to the, the guardrail, or the arrangements we have up there, if our public safety officials are, tell us that they don't object to that, and if it would facilitate operations with the skiway, I don't wanna be difficult for the sake of being difficult, but I wanna hear from these people, and right now, what we're getting is kinda these whiffs of, you know, well, they said this, they said that.
I think you're not getting it.
So, so that's, that's why I, my impulse would be to say to, to Tony and to Scott, and to Mark, why don't you guys come in and, and talk to us, and we can, you know, Mark is saying, well, they, they said it'd be okay to make an opening, and we're hearing that, it is, they didn't say that, and I'd just like to get this straight out before we make a decision.
I don't even think it's possible, and that's what I heard, that, that guardrails are no longer being made that way with a sharp cutoff, yep.
Could be.
You take more space away when you make the big curves to go in, and.
Well, you must've, he must not get that day.
You must have missed that day, because it was like.
I, I remember, I remember Sean saying that, but I also remember just being a little skeptical.
Okay.
But, 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 I don't.
Well, go talk to Tony.
Well, let's.
Yeah, I could do, that's another way I could talk to Tony immediately, if I'm the only one who has questions, but.
We could have Tony and Scott come in, although they're both really busy, I hate to bring them in, just because, well, let's put it.
Well, come on, we got more crapola over the, the guardrails than any other issue last year, that was the unaddressed.
Yeah, and it's done and over with, my goodness, let's let it go.
Well, I'm in favor of letting it go, but I, I know that if you are unresolved on it, then we should do it, because I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know, you know, what he's thinking up there, and.
And also Tony might have a different view than Sean.
But you should talk to Tony about it.
Yep, yep. Well, let's have Tony and Scott come in, and then, if we're still up in the air, we'll have Mark, but you should let Mark know that, at this point, the board seems to be ready to make a decision, but we're not there today, how about that?
I don't wanna tell him you're ready to make a decision, because there's no decision to be made, you already did it.
Yeah.
And you gotta hear from Tony and, or talk with Tony and what's his name, maybe, maybe you will be wanting to make a decision, then you can invite him.
Okay, well, I don't think ever leaving the guardrails would be done with it.
I know, I'm very tired of it myself.
But, he needs to have an answer.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, and that's, and that's fair.
Fair, right.
We shouldn't leave him in.
Okay, so you're gonna individually talk to Tony.
Okay.
See if there's a difference of opinion.
Okay.
If there is, we'll bring him in, we'll bring everybody in.
Perfect, that sounds fine, I'll reach out to Tony individually.
Perfect.
Then it will be all cleared up. Well, no, if you have to, if you have to have something, another meeting about it, then you can, that'd be perfect. I just hate to start, it's kinda like, you know, spraying a hornet's nest.
Mm-hmm, run fast.
I saw somebody do that on YouTube, it worked great.
Well, we have, we have a big one, or had a big one, that Matt has handled for us, thank gosh, oh, the boat landing.
Really?
Big, huge ground hornet's nest, yeah.
Oh, I've heard some.
A bunch of doggies got stung.
That's when you need the bears to come around. They're doing right now, it's cleaning hornets, well, one of the females came in last night, she had yellow jackets all over.
The stings don't bother her?
No, and that's a huge source of protein.
Yummy, yummy.
Well, they don't wanna eat this one, 'cause Matt has sprayed it a lot with yucky stuff.
Well, they won't do it if it was sprayed. I've, we had loggers, and they were spraying their nests and getting stung, and I said, just let the bears do it, and then he started observing the fact the bears are taking them out.
Phil.
The Code of Ethics, I think, is important for us to discuss at some point, what recusals should look like. I mean, I'm on the budget committee, the library board, you know, this one, that one, and the other one, where might I have to recuse myself, what is a conflict of interest?
Yep, I think, I think that this policy.
Just look at the policies, it goes.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, so.
I'm gonna put it right on, yeah.
But there are definitions in there, and, and that's a really great point, yeah, and.
And it also addresses questions like, you, you, you know, some of this stuff isn't black and white, and so, how do you deal with that, and generally, the position that this draft takes is, the person who's got the potential conflict needs to raise it with their committee, and then the committee takes an advisory vote on it.
Okay, that makes sense, 'cause when the library comes up to the budget committee, you know, I have to.
You have to decide, are you, are you a budget committee member, or are you representing the library?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, so, yep, and that should be available, I would think, by the end of the day, maybe, or tomorrow at the latest.
Oh, I think you can go right on ASAP.
Excellent.
Do you wanna pick a date for a public hearing to discuss it? Isn't that what you decided to do?
Yes, we did, but I think it should be, well, it'll happen here sometime, or October.
And are you gonna do it during one of your meetings, or are you gonna do it?
I would really like to do it during a meeting, but I'm sure other people would rather do it at night. I get really worn out by the end of the day, September.
I don't care, we'll either one.
You don't care.
Well, we do have Zoom.
Yeah, of course, if you're at work, it's hard to.
That's very true.
Do it. All right, so the next meeting is September second, and then there's the sixteenth, I know.
I know, I can't believe it.
Screaming.
Or the thirty, in September, you have three. And I think that's plenty of time for, I mean, the warrant deadline for the warrant isn't till February, so.
How about the thirtieth, September thirtieth?
Okay.
And we will, we can begin discussions if people have access to it, but I'd really like to do it during the regular meeting time.
And I can have Jordan post it with, you know, a comment that.
I should email it.
If people, right, if people have feelings, you know, that they'd like to express, and they might not be able to make the meeting, to email in, to the select board email.
And ju- do you, just for clarity, this will be a, the, the public hearing for this prior to it going to the, to the warrant?
No, 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 qualify for that, it will have to be lumped in with some of the other ones that we'll have, because you can't, the final public hearing has to be within so many days of town meeting.
Oh, really, huh, okay.
That's right, thirty, so there would be a second chance.
This'll be the first one, which is good.
Will this be just a public meeting? Would that be, I mean, I don't know, what?
Is it a formal hearing?
It's a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
You asking questions I know nothing of, I have to go back and look it up in my manual.
Right.
And what date are we talking about for that?
September thirty.
It's a Tuesday, the last.
Okay.
Day before, two days before, you don't control.
Right.
Oh, God, and now it starts.
It's gonna be Christmas.
Yes, first there's Thanksgiving, and then, too many holidays, all right. I used to advocate, once a month, a three-day weekend, just take all those other things out, and everybody gets a three-day weekend once a month, it'd be way easier, nobody took me up on that.
A three-day weekend, really?
Yeah.
That's like a good idea to make.
I know.
You know, four days would be.
Yeah, well, it beats six or seven. Okay, that's there, anything else?
I don't think so.
I feel really disjointed today, and I do apologize for being kind of goofy. Ben, you're up.
Time to quit?
Yes, sir.
We didn't have any.
I guess we don't have a non-public, because.
Unless you need one for something that I don't know about.
No.
I don't think we do.
Time to quit, then.
Then I would quit.
You know what, um, well, you know, I just wanted to comment that, I thought it was remarkable that we sent that letter about the property on Baker Hill, and they actually responded to it, and took out all the stuff that we asked them to, so, it's not gonna win any prizes in home and garden magazines, but the, the, the property on the corner of Bruce Pond and Baker Hill is now, at least, as far as the select board is concerned, we think in compliance with the law, and so, if anybody in the public drives by there and has a different view about that, that they should come forward.
I drove by and was quite frankly amazed, I think there is still a huge pile of what I would question as being valuable things in front of the house, but it, in my sensibility, I think it meets what they were asked to do, and, and it meets, it's not unlike other properties.
Yeah, one man's treasures, another man's junk.
Yeah, now, we got the, the bigger.
Yes.
Problems, so.
I thought there was a two-washing machine limit, two rusted washing machines is all you get.
Next time, yes, we will be talking with council next time, I'm going forward, but I thank you for bringing that up, David, yeah, it's good to see.
And thank you to the family for moving that along.
Exactly, I, I agree that I should have said that too, it was really nice to see that action had been taken. Very much. All right, I will second Ben's.
Stephen, aye.
Julie, aye.
Ben, aye.
There we go, we are all finished at eleven fifty.